I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. We have a very full agenda tonight, so okay, let's get right to it. Would you please call the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
McComber.
Here.
Rowland.
Here.
Seeliger.
Here.
Zanfordino.
Here.
The minutes from the meeting that was held on November 20th, 2017, were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any corrections or amendments to these minutes? See, none. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented. Kate, do we have correspondents this evening?
Um, yes. I have, uh, from Finance Director Brian Bouchong, two financial officer certificates, um, with the, an issue in regards to the proposed issue of bonds and the maximum principal amount of $3,750,000 to pay costs of improving the city's park and recreation facilities by demolishing city park buildings, clearing and improving the site, and constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new city park building. And then also, one in the maximum principal amount of $6,200, $200,000 to pay costs of improving the I-75 in East Worcester Street area by constructing roundabouts. And I just have those two. And then also, um, budget transfers were distributed to you prior to the meeting for your approval.
Is there a motion to approve the budget transfers?
So moved.
So?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The budget transfers are approved as presented.
And I also have, um, which was distributed to you, um, via email, and then you also have it in front of you, is a, an appointment to the Human Relations Commission that was requested by Mayor Edwards, Sebastian Ochoa-Camp, for a three-year term expiring 5/31/2020, for your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the commission appointment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The commission appointment is approved as presented.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Kate. I'm told that we do have a special recognition this evening, Mr. Mayor. Wonderful.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council, and I'm going to call upon Reverend Mary Jane Saunders to come forward, the co-chair, the chair, really, no longer a co-chair, the chair of our wonderful Human Relations Commission. Mary Jane?
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor, of council.
And you have some other members of the commission?
We do. We have, uh, Marcy St. John and Margaret Montague are here, representing the commission as well, because this is one of the fun things I get to do as chair of the commission, and that's to present these recognitions. Uh, the Human Relations Commission, as you all know, is committed to promoting respect for diversity and encouraging positive interactions among the citizens, the diverse citizens of our city. And to that end, several times a year, the commission recognizes and applauds individuals, organizations, or businesses who work together to promote diversity and who work on those same ideals to which the commission is committed. And so tonight, on behalf of the commission, I am pleased to present the honor roll award to an organization that is committed to those goals, and that is the Eastside Residential Neighborhood Group. And I have a little background on this group. This was prepared by Marcy St. John, to give you an idea of who they are. On a summer night back in 2007, a group of eight neighbors gathered to discuss issues involving rental properties, as well as owner-occupied housing on the east side of Bowling Green. Today, this group is known as the Eastside Residential Neighborhood Group, and it has 300 members plus 1,300 additional supporters. Wow. Their mission statement reads, "We are citizens committed to enhancing residential neighborhoods, encouraging property maintenance in the pursuit of safe housing for all, and promoting beautification of properties in a strong and diverse community. The group's presence in a university town has been important since market forces are not always favorable or helpful to student renters, or for that matter, to families, to non-student renters and others. In the past decade, Eastside has developed goals which it takes proactive efforts to achieve, and these goals include: fostering good relationships between permanent residents and non-permanent residents, encouraging property maintenance by all homeowners, encouraging closer supervision by landlords of their property, and working closely with the city on overoccupancy and nuisance issues, and continuing a strong liaison with the Office of the Dean of Students at BG SU. Eastside's proactive and welcoming gestures towards BG SU students provide information on rights and responsibilities. Educational outreach in 2017 took the form of participation in the Court Street Connects Festival, presentations to community groups, hand-distributed flyers in neighborhoods, and involvement in the development of the Community Action Plan. Members monitor the exterior of properties for compliance with city code, and they've been able to make procedural changes, get repairs done, and encourage cooperative behavior among residents. A key aspect of Eastside's work on rental properties is intervention on poorly maintained properties where safety has become an issue. In keeping with the goals of the Human Relations Commission, the Eastside Residential Neighborhood Group advocates for safe housing for all people in the community, and we are pleased tonight to recognize this dedicated group by presenting them with this honor roll award." And we do have some representatives here tonight, Mark Hollenbaum, Elizabeth Burrows, John Zanfordino, and Rose Hoss. And so I'm going to invite Rose to come up, and anyone else who wants to come up with her?
Elizabeth? Well, on behalf of the city, I thank the honor and pleasure to present you with recognition, honor roll, Eastside Neighborhood. Human Relations Commission honor roll recognizes and applauds individual, organizations, and local businesses who work together to promote diversity initiatives and to work to improve the well-being of persons. Your collective efforts benefit the Bowling Green community. Surely, thank you. Signed by me and a person from the chair under. And, uh, I just wanted to add a little, commend you, actually applaud leadership, especially you. If there was ever, um, one person not afraid to do some of the heavy lifting, and, uh, say you put into action first, follow through, and you're not afraid to get your hands in, or are you afraid to get in some faces of people like myself? So, and I think that's all very, very good. And so I really congratulate you and commend you for your leadership, organization, and many others helping to voice in the...
Well, I just turned 77 this year, so I said, I don't think we'll go another 10 years, because by then, I'll be pushing 90. Um, we, we, when we started out, we never intended to be a neighborhood association per se. Um, yes, we deliver fruit baskets to new homeowners, we welcome students, we visited about over 500 houses in, in August, 1,500 flyers. Um, we do Christmas dinners for the needy and that kind of thing. This year, we have four families that we're supporting. But we're primarily an activist group, and we do get in the face of people. So it's nice to be recognized tonight because we know that not everybody loves us. But by and large, I think we're on the right trail. Um, over the, the last 10 years, a few people have kind of asked me in a sort of strange kind of way, "Well, you're a kind of different neighborhood group. What do you really do?" As if we engage in some kind of nefarious activity. And I said, "Well, those of you that know me know that I spent 35 years in the classroom teaching Spanish. I taught the language, I taught the culture." I was always intrigued by bullfights, and Americans just think that bullfights are the dumbest thing that you could ever have. But everybody thinks that when the bullfighter kills the bull, that's it. He did it all on his own, but he doesn't. Before the bullfighter actually gets into the ring, there are two things that take place. I'm only going to talk about one. There's a group of men who ride horseback. The horses are padded, and they're blindfolded, because imagine a horse going into a bullring with, oh, a bull that weighs close to 2,000 pounds. So at any rate, they ride their horses, they have long stakes, they're about six feet long, and they have metal on the edge. And what these guys do, they're called picadores, which means pickers. They stab the bull in the neck, okay, and they weaken the neck muscle so that when the bullfighter gets in the ring, it's a little easier to kill the bull. So I said to one of the guys, I was trying to explain this to, I said, "We're kind of like picadores." And he said, "What?" I said, "We pick. We pick, we prod, we pro, we poke, and then we go to the city." I think Heather has more emails from Eastside than probably any other group. We bug Tony Hetrick, we bug Tom Gibson, we meet with landlords. We are constantly doing something. So basically, that's what we do. Whether we succeed or not, I don't know. But thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And thank you, Elizabeth and Mark. And Daniel was on our board for a while, and now John, and we have two other board members who are out of state. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kate, do we have, um, visitors that have signed up for lobby visitation this evening?
No, we do not.
Thank you very much. So we move on to our official reports. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled. Um, first, I want to, I want to thank you very much for your appointment to, to the newest member of the city's Human Relations Commission. And I have every reason to believe that Sebastian Ochoa-Camp will be an outstanding, uh, three-year appointment and, and member of, of that wonderful body. Um, Sebastian even attended the meeting this last Friday, and he knew that he couldn't vote and so forth. He wasn't official yet until you, um, uh, made it possible. Um, but I could tell that he's going to be a, a, a very, you know, special and a very important addition to the work of the city's Human Relations Commission. And, uh, so I was, I want to thank Julie for bringing Sebastian to our attention and that, and we appreciate it very much. Thank you. Uh, just several brief items to report here. We received a very thoughtful note of appreciation for Mark Oshasi, the Director of the Habitat for Humanity of Wood County. As Mark stated, "What a historical vote and an, and an opportunity for three families in Bowling Green who can benefit not only from the amazing Bowling Green community, but also to have a decent and affordable home to raise a family." And I just have to, uh, just pass this down. Uh, I don't think, did you, did you all get one? Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure. I wasn't sure, uh, because this really shows you all in action here, and, uh, it's a, and I'm impressed with his, first, I thought he was printing or his handwriting, but some others have said, "No, you can really make this kind of thing happen," I guess, but I don't know. For the, I'm going to give Mark credit for having that kind of handwriting, because I could never even come close to having something like that. I would also, um, like to draw to your attention, uh, the, as you know, our, our, our village to the south of, of Bowling Green, Portage, has been some, through some rather tumultuous times. And, um, I was so struck by, uh, the fact that in, uh, Saturday's edition of, of the Sentinel Tribune, they had this poll made by them. Uh, uh, you know, it, it's not a, a, all of the ad or anything like that, or we, what do we typically refer to some of our things we have to put in before announcing?
Legal notice.
Legal, yeah, legal notice. I don't know why I was bringing up that. But in any event, this tells, if you haven't had a chance to see it, I hope you might go back and check your Saturday paper out, because it's a, it's a, it tells of a wonderful story of some very determined, uh, folks down there trying to do, uh, good work on behalf of the, uh, of, of the citizens of, of, of Portage. And, um, and I have written a note of congratulations to Mayor Wolford and, uh, and his council, and underscored our appreciation for their good work and their overriding message of teamwork that makes a difference. And, uh, I just, uh, it just really resonated with me, and, and I thought, as they were in a big deep hole, somehow, they all pulled together and figured a way out. And I have to really commend them for that, and I know I'm speaking for you as well. Uh, if your schedules permit, I hope you will consider attending a special memorial service this Friday afternoon as a tribute to the good work and faithful stewardship of the late Steve Krakoff, the Vice President for Capitol Planning at BG SU. Uh, the service will take place at 3:30 in the Donnell Theater of the Wolf Center, and I will be speaking on behalf of the city and in special rec, appreciation for all of Steve's good work, especially in the development of the city's future land use plan and with the city, uh, the East Worcester Street Corridor Project. And, uh, I know that, um, again, I'm, I can speak for you all because you've already, uh, reflected on, in, in different ways, on Steve's good work and his leadership at the university. And, um, and Heather Saylor reminded me, um, I, and in a very special way, because, uh, she had some special ties with, with Steve Krakoff, uh, growing up in the same neighborhood in Toledo, same high school, and a variety of other kinds of associations and that. But she reminded me, and, um, and I've thought a lot about it, uh, but, um, every time, um, that we worked with Steve, uh, he was always so, uh, demonstrated special appreciation for working the city/university relationships here and working on, on planning. And, uh, Heather said that, uh, when we had that public viewing of the, of the land use plan, and I think we were down, right downtown here at the, not the Clayzelle, but we were next door, that, it's now Dox, is it? Um, and, we had a circular route around there, and you will remember it and so forth, and Bruce, you will especially, because you put a lot of time and effort into that whole, uh, process there. But how enthusiastic Bruce was about it, and, uh, not Bruce, but Bruce was as well, but Steve. And, um, uh, it, it just, uh, it made a, a difference for all of us, and he really played a very constructive role in the, in the future land use plan and carrying it forward with, not only through the Planning Commission, but the city council as well. And, uh, so, um, I won't be speaking, uh, at length, but, but trying to come up with the right words and so forth to express appreciation on behalf of the city to his family. He's going to have 17 members of his family, uh, present, uh, there on, on, on Friday. So, uh, that concludes my report, unless you have questions of me, but I would be remiss if I did not, uh, take this opportunity to wish you a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, and a happy holiday season. And, uh, this is a very special time of the year, and I know that some of us, Bob, are going to save a little ammo for you on, on the 28th, but this is, uh, really the, will be the last of your first full-blown regular, uh, council meetings. And, uh, as we've tried to say in a variety of ways, uh, how much we appreciate your leadership and, uh, and your work, especially with the Finance Committee, and what it's meant for this, uh, community. And, uh, also, I really want to commend you, because I've heard you tell the story a number of times, your stand on the anti-discrimination ordinance and how you reasoned that all out and came to, uh, a determination on it, along with the other members of council. So, uh, just want to commend you and applaud your leadership and all that you've done for the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions?
Thank you. Other questions for the mayor? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter?
Good evening, council. Just a reminder that the mayor has declared the month of December as free parking in downtown Bowling Green, so there are no meter fees in the downtown. However, other parking limitations such as time limits do apply. Also, uh, Mr. President, wanted to confirm with you, your meeting on the 28th, is your start time 5:00 P.M.?
In the past, we have started that meeting at 5:00 P.M., correct?
Okay.
Unless I'm hearing anything, um, from the table at this point that would lead us in a different direction, I think that we could plan on that.
Okay, thank you. We just want to make sure we advertise that correctly, since that is a change to your schedule.
Thank you.
And the last thing for you this evening is to request an executive session at the end of this council meeting to discuss a legal matter. We would not anticipate taking action after that.
Very good. Thank you. Other questions for Lori? Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning Director, Ms. Saylor. Questions for Heather? Very good. Thank you, Heather. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
Good evening. Just a couple of things, um, all good news. A couple housekeeping bits of information. Bicycle Safety Commission does not typically meet in December, and we are sticking with that tradition, so there will not be a Bike Safety Commission meeting this month. Um, Park Board, uh, typically the past couple of years has not met in December either, although we are meeting tomorrow for our November meeting. So, there will not be a meeting on the regularly scheduled, uh, Park Board date later in December. And there's been information that, that's gone out about that. Um, just wanted to quick remind you. So, um, just really quickly, um, some great news. We just recently were notified that we received three different grants. So, one of which was already in the paper. That's how we always find out about it. Um, first, uh, the Wood County Park District, uh, annual grants, uh, we did receive funding for one, uh, project, a little over $4,000 for a scaler tunnel net. Don't ask me exactly what that is, but it's another piece of equipment for our outdoor obstacle course. Um, and the Bowling Green Community Foundation recently, um, notified people about their grants, and we received two. That goes through our foundation, uh, because you must be a nonprofit. Um, $3,000 for the mosaic project. We're going to start Phase Two. Um, so a lot of people have been asking about that, so if you are interested in that, please see me. But, uh, they did give us $3,000 towards that project. Um, and then $1,500 is, uh, a partnership. We're working with Wood County Safe Communities and the Bicycle Safety Commission, um, and they awarded us $1,500 to do some pedestrian and bike education. So we'll be working with Sandy Weckman very closely on that. So, um, just a little bit of good news as we're mulling budgets over, so. That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Thank you. Other questions for Kristen? Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh? Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell. Questions for Mr. O'Connell? Thank you, Brian. Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft. Other questions for Mr. Kraft? Thank you, Brian. We move on our agenda to the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
From the Finance Committee, I have quite a number of resolutions and proposed ordinances. First, a resolution transferring previously appropriated funds. Next, a resolution to support a coalition of municipalities retaining special counsel for purposes of initiating litigation to challenge the constitutionality of amendments to Chapter 718 of the Ohio Revised Code relating to municipal income tax. I have a resolution authorizing the Finance Director to establish a capital project fund entitled, quote, "City Park Building Fund", end quote, for the city of Bowling Green, Wood County, Ohio. I have an ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017. I have an ordinance to provide appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018. I have an ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.18 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio relative to salaried employees not subject to overtime pay. I have an ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.01G of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio relative to salary schedule established. I have an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $6,200,000 for the purpose of paying cost of improving the I-75 and East Worcester Street area by constructing roundabouts, reconstructing, widening, paving, resurfacing, grading, draining, constructing curbs, sidewalks, and related drainage improvements, installing signalization and lighting, installing water lines and sanitary sewers, and constructing a sanitary sewer pump station, together with necessary and incidental appurtenances and such other costs of those improvements as are permitted by the Revised Code, Section 133.15, to be funded from the proceeds of securities and declaring an emergency. I have an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $3,750,000 for the purpose of paying cost of improving the city's park and recreation facilities by demolishing city park buildings, clearing and improving the site, and constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new city park building in its place, and including landscaping, paving an entry drive and parking lot, and constructing a patio, together with necessary and incidental appurtenances and such other costs of those improvements as are permitted by Revised Code, Section 133.15, to be funded from the proceeds of securities and declaring an emergency. I have an ordinance amending and adopting Section 114.11 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding taxi cab driver's license issuance, duration, and fee. And finally, I have an ordinance authorizing the Municipal Administrator to request qualifications and enter into a contract or contracts for architectural and design services related to the new building and city park.
Thank you, Bob. We're going to make you earn your money on your way out the door.
I have an ordinance from the Public Utilities Committee. This is an ordinance authorizing the transfer of approximately 3.15 acres of land in Ballard Business Center, Platte One, to the Bowling Green Community Development Foundation Incorporated in lieu of dues and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
From the Community Improvement Committee, we have a resolution adopting and authorizing an amended Housing Revolving Loan Fund Program Policy and Procedures Manual. And we have a resolution adopting and authorizing an amended Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Housing Policy and Procedures Manual.
Thank you, Daniel.
Mr. President?
Mr. Zanfordino?
From the Transportation and Safety Committee, I have a resolution adopting amendments to the Policy and Procedures Manual for BG Transit.
Thank you, John. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
As you know, we had a Finance Committee meeting on, I believe it was November 29th to review the proposed 2018 budget. The administration made a very good presentation regarding the budget, talked about it for most of an hour, and at the, the end of the meeting, the committee unanimously voted to move the budget to council. It's on tonight's agenda for a couple of readings, and then we plan to have a third reading and vote on the budget at December 28th. Probably the highlight of the meeting was just the fact that, as opposed to last year, when we were looking at a several hundred thousand dollar deficit in the budget, uh, this was a balanced budget. Uh, there are a lot of, uh, interrelated parts in it. It's pretty complicated in, in parts, uh, but, uh, certainly thank the administration, Joe and Lori and Brian, for putting this thing together once again. I'm sure they're even happier than we are to have it out of the way and out of their hair for, until, till next year at the same time. But it was a, a very good meeting, and I think, uh, we're got a, got a solid budget to, to, as a game plan. It's not necessarily what will happen, but it's, uh, we have a good game plan to start next year.
Thank you, Bob. Additional council committee reports? Okay, very good. We move to the reading of legislation. Kate, if you're ready.
I am. Legislation for first reading, Resolution Number 3685 for first reading, resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to suspend, suspend the rules and give resolution, was it 3685, Kate?
Yes.
Correct.
3685 at second and third reading.
Second?
It's moved and seconded. Kate, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Resolution 3685.
Resolution Number 3685 for second and third reading, resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt Resolution 3685.
Second?
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kate, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3685 is adopted.
Resolution Number 3686 for first reading, resolution to support a coalition of municipalities retaining special counsel for purposes of initiating litigation to challenge the constitutionality of amendments to Chapter 718 of the Ohio Revised Code relating to municipal income tax.
President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to suspend the rules and give Resolution 3686 at second and third reading.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Kay, please call the roll.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Resolution 3686.
Resolution Number 3686 for second and third reading. Resolution to support a coalition of municipalities retaining special counsel for the purposes of initiating litigation to challenge the constitutionality of amendments to Chapter 718 of the Ohio Revised Code relating to municipal income tax.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber?
I move to adopt Resolution 3686.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I would just like to say that I'm pleased that council is considering this resolution this evening. And we've actually had a fair amount of discussion over the past couple of years about this idea of municipal income tax collection. And I think that our participation in adding our voice to this resolution opposed to such a process is certainly appropriate. And I'm pleased that council is giving this fair consideration. Kay, please call the roll.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3686 is adopted.
Resolution Number 3687 for first reading. Resolution authorizing the Finance Director to establish a capital project fund entitled, "City Park Building Fund" for the city of Bowling Green, Wood County, Ohio.
President?
Mr. McComber?
I move to suspend the rules for Resolution 3687 and give it a second and third reading.
Tag it.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Resolution 3687.
Resolution Number 3687 for second and third reading. Resolution authorizing the Finance Director to establish a capital project fund entitled, "City Park Building Fund" for the city of Bowling Green, Wood County, Ohio.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber?
I move to adopt Resolution 3687.
Tag it.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3687 is adopted.
Resolution Number 3688 for first reading. Resolution adopting amendments to the Policy and Procedures Manual for BG Transit.
I move to suspend the rules and give Resolution 3688 its second reading.
Tag it.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Resolution 3688.
Resolution Number 3688 for second reading. Resolution adopting amendments to the Policy and Procedures Manual for BG Transit. Resolution Number 3689 for first reading. Resolution adopting and authorizing an amended Housing Revolving Loan Fund Program Policy and Procedures Manual. Resolution Number 3690 for first reading. Resolution adopting and authorizing an amended Community Development Block Grant Housing Policy and Procedures Manual. Ordinance Number 8645 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber?
I move to suspend the rules for Ordinance 8645 and give the ordinance its second and third reading.
Tag it.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8645.
Ordinance Number 8645 for second and third reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber?
I move to adopt the ordinance 8645.
Second?
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8645 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8646 for first reading. Ordinance provide appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber?
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8646 its second reading.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8646.
Ordinance Number 8646 for second reading. Ordinance provide appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018. Ordinance Number 8647 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.18 of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio relative to salaried employees not subject to overtime pay.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber?
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8647 its second reading.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8647.
Ordinance Number 8647 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.18 of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio relative to salaried employees not subject to overtime pay. Ordinance Number 8648 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.01G of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio relative to salary schedule established.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber?
I move to suspend the rules and give the ordinance 8648 its second reading.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8648.
Ordinance Number 8649 for first reading. Ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $6,200,000 for the purpose of paying costs of improving the I-75 and East Worcester Street area by constructing roundabouts, reconstructing, widening, paving, resurfacing, grading, draining, constructing curbs, sidewalks, and related drainage improvements, installing signalization and lighting, installing water lines and sanitary sewers, and constructing a sanitary sewer pump station, together with necessary and incidental appurtenances and such other costs of those improvements as are permitted by Revised Code, Section 133.15, to be funded from the proceeds of securities and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber?
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8649 its second reading.
Second?
It is moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
I missed that. Who made the motion?
Mr. McComber.
Okay.
And seconded by Mr. Zanfordino.
Thank you. Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8649.
Ordinance Number 8649 for second reading. Ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $6,200,000 for the purpose of paying costs of improving the I-75 and East Worcester Street area by constructing roundabouts, reconstructing, widening, paving, resurfacing, grading, draining, constructing curbs, sidewalks, and related drainage improvements, installing signalization and lighting, installing water lines and sanitary sewers, and constructing a sanitary sewer pump station, together with necessary and incidental appurtenances and such other costs of those improvements as are permitted by Revised Code, Section 133.15, to be funded from the proceeds of securities and declaring an emergency. City Attorney pointed out to me that I did not give 8648 its second reading, so I'll do that.
Thank you.
Ordinance Number 8648 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.01G of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio relative to salary schedule established.
Thank you.
Ordinance Number 8650 for first reading. Ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $3,750,000 for the purpose of paying costs of improving the city's park and recreation facilities by demolishing city park buildings, clearing and improving the site, and constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new city park building in its place, and including landscaping, paving an entry, drive, and parking lot, and constructing a patio together with necessary and incidental appurtenances and such other costs of those improvements as are permitted by Revised Code, Section 133.15, to be funded from the proceeds of securities and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber?
I move to suspend the rules and give the ordinance 8650 its second reading.
Tag it.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8650.
Ordinance Number 8650 for second reading. Ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $3,750,000 for the purpose of paying costs of improving the city's park and recreation facilities by demolishing city park buildings, clearing and improving the site, and constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new city park building in its place, and including landscaping, paving an entry, drive, and parking lot, and constructing a patio, together with necessary and incidental appurtenances and such other costs of those improvements as are permitted by Revised Code, Section 133.15, to be funded from the proceeds of securities and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 8651 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 114.11 of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding taxi cab driver's license issuance, duration, and fee. Ordinance Number 8652 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to request qualifications and enter into a contract or contracts for architectural and design services related to the new building in City Park.
President?
Mr. McComber?
I move to suspend the rules and give the ordinance 8652 its second reading.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8652.
Ordinance Number 8652 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to request qualifications and enter into a contract or contracts for architectural and design services related to the new building in City Park. Ordinance Number 8653 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the transfer of approximately 3.15 acres of land in Ballard Business Center, Plat 1, to the Bowling Green Community Development Foundation, Incorporated, in lieu of dues and declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend the rules and give the ordinance 8653 its second reading.
Tag it.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8653.
Ordinance Number 8653 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the transfer of approximately 3.15 acres of land in Ballard Business Center, Plat 1, to the Bowling Green Community Development Foundation, Incorporated, in lieu of dues and declaring an emergency. Legislation for second reading. Ordinance Number 8643 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.37 of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding compensatory time for hourly employees. Ordinance Number 8644 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sign an LPA agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation and to seek qualifications and/or advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for design, engineering, right-of-way acquisition, construction, and other services relating to the resurfacing of Manville Avenue.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber?
I move to suspend the rules and give the ordinance 8644 its third reading.
Tag it.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8644.
Ordinance Number 8644 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sign an LPA agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation and to seek qualifications and/or advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for design, engineering, right-of-way acquisition, construction, and other services relating to the resurfacing of Manville Avenue.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber?
I move to adopt the ordinance 8644.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8644 is adopted.
Legislation for third reading. Resolution Number 3683 for third reading. Resolution authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into a renewal of the agreement with the Wood County Public Defender.
Mr. McComber? I move to adopt Resolution 3683.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3683 is adopted.
Resolution Number 3684 for third reading. Resolution adopting the Bowling Green Fire Division five-year strategic plan.
Mr. President?
Mr. Zanfordino?
I move that we adopt Resolution 3684.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3684 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8642 for third reading. Ordinance certifying unpaid cost of weed mowing to the county auditor for placement on the tax duplicate.
President?
Mr. McComber?
I move to adopt the ordinance 8642.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I think we should discuss this just because it'd be funny, and this has not been a funny meeting. Other than that, I have no comments. We'll take that under advisement. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Kay, please call the roll.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8642 is adopted. Well, that completes the items on our agenda this evening. Kay, thank you very much for your hard work. At this point, I would, first of all, like to remind everybody that our next meeting is going to be held on the 28th of December. That meeting will begin at 5:00 P.M. in these chambers. That'll be our last meeting of the year. And at this point, I would accept a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss a legal matter. And I would say that it is not expected we will take action in this meeting.
So moved.
Second?
It is moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes. The motion passes. We now adjourn to executive session. Thank you, everyone, and have a very good holiday season. Thanks.